Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Lewis Hughes. I'm the acting chair, vice chair of the planning board and acting chair tonight. I have some sad news to tell you. We have, we can only have 26 people in this room.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five people in this room. And what do we have, was it 28?
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine. So, less than three people want to leave. You're entitled to stay, but we exceeded the quorum. So, I would say because we exceeded the quorum, we'll have to adjourn the meeting.
Well, I mean, what if we were to have three or four people leave?
You can't ask that.
You can't have that. People are entitled to stay.
But we can take some of our team members out.
No.
The number of people on the car. shrink down?
We will proceed. Put on a floor.
We'll take some of our team members out.
Yeah.
Just to make it clear, we are not asking you to leave. You are doing this voluntarily.
Yeah, you're doing this voluntarily.
I'm lying with the 25 person.
Correct.
How many do we need? Do I get to go home now?
Probably not. I can't go home either.
It says Shaun, so there's three people, so we got three. Yeah. There's three, so we got 25.
What count?
We got two more, count them. We got two.
One more.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Another one just came in.
I'm a doctor.
Okay.
Okay.
And you got Karen coming in too, you know, for something.
You have. One more?
We need one more. Seth, you want?
We have two people leave.
Two people. We need two people to leave.
You know what, um...
You want me to go?
Is exactly six of us, I mean, if you want to leave five minutes, because I don't know how many people are still standing in.
There's a lot of power, it just around here.
All right, we'll wait five minutes.
Ironically, Summer Street has no electricity.
Yeah.
Did you guys cut our wires on your way in?
Really? I did. I had one.
We don't, not on, not right by the train station. We don't. Yeah, we lost that. We all... You know what, that really dad went to, we lost it and like you guys didn't. We were like up at my friend's house every night, like five o'clock he'd dawn, and just move it. We did.
Uh, you can ask the chair, whoever wants to work that.
My daughter just told me, she said, "Hey, quick, turn on this, I'll...
I said cereal. Just don't keep her to the right."
I mean, yeah, some people always do, but we need to be honest. Actually, yeah, they think we have 25.
And they can't handle that. We were wanting to answer the question, and they didn't answer it.
If somebody come back.
Because it's not the case.
So, is the developer actually opting to not properly represent themselves during this meeting?
Correct. So, everybody is welcome to come to the meeting. And if you have too many people, then we have to adjourn, and you can tell we have found an end there. That everybody can sit, and this is a presentation.
Right. So, the developer is not properly representing themselves with all members of their board in all points of their presentation at this point then?
No, not at all.
That's the law.
Now, we, you know, we had people here who were just here to observe, and so we've asked them to leave. Yeah. Thanks, Sean.
This was not a shock. Right? The governor just increased the amount of people in the room. About three percent.
Is that kind of the size? Or are they based on...
No. Well, the only thing we were able to have happening here was an unlimited amount of people. So, to speak, we've got seven, two people, I think, that have been from the new administration. That was, we're on the table that's the situation of that. So, we could have, you could have represented your own, only the county. So, regardless of the people, there's 25 people.
So, in fact, right, we just go up, in your show up.
Inside, see, 25 people, 10,000.
But, and, you know, so it's a public hearing, so you can't say people that they can't eat or... What's the option, have them outside?
You should have seen it before. Like my grandson moved his car with trees.
We could have unlimited number of people outside.
Or 100.
Yes. It seems like...
It's 2020 in this tornado morning.
So, probably technically, if you're trying to tell, it started up somewhere. I'm not saying that they should, but the planning board doesn't have the funds to do that.
A lot of times, that time, we, in football, we're...
Kind of from how, there's a meeting, not a meeting.
Yeah, it's absolutely possible, you know, how many people, I don't know, you can have five.
You got to do it.
Very good. In fact, I missed last one. Stuff to do. I just don't have to work. It's like, let me shoot. Got it with that correct.
So, I, um, but they... Okay, so everybody needs to go to the...
Oh, you do.
Yep.
And I will text us, and you.
So, we need you for two rows up, and down, just like Tommy, and you guys, you stay in the...
I live with you, you're stuck with me.
You guys don't need to move, do you?
Sure.
Three seats apart, that's all I'm asking. Two rows, two rows between you. Two rows, two rows. Get together.
All right, let's go. Start this thing as soon as Mrs. Shaden comes back to the stage. Okay. Okay, it's being 6:50 or so. Welcome to the Avenue Planning Board meeting, Avenue High School Auditorium, August 4th, 2020, 6:00 P.M. Follow this meeting order. So, tonight we're going to have a public hearing, site plan, and special permit for zero Summer Street continued. And I will start with the proponents taking their presentation. If you can identify yourself.
My name's Brian Marchetti. My name's Brian Marchetti with McCarty Engineering, here tonight on behalf of John Iredale and the Carrington Company for the development at the Everton Crossing project off Summer Street. The last time we met, I believe, was early February. Submitted a set of site plans. We've gone through several rounds of reviews. And at the last meeting, it basically came down to access with, for fire apparatus, fire trucks, emergency vehicles, felt that it wasn't adequate to serve the facility safely. So, we've basically kept the same configuration of buildings on the site, parking areas, and we've revised the layout of the buildings to better accommodate safer access. We did a couple of iterations with it. We came and met with Chief Nuttall to review the plan, and we think we've now come to an agreement where the four buildings that are proposed as they are today satisfy Chief Nuttall's concern about fire apparatus safely being able to access the front and rear of all the proposed buildings. So, I don't know how best to present this plan so everyone can see it. But the previous supplemental included this first building here, was the L-shaped building. We had these two series of buildings with a large courtyard in between. And then on the western side of Monahan Crossing, we had the same configuration with two buildings with a large courtyard. And that was basically the contention point, that we had a fire department where vehicles wouldn't be able to safely access. It was just too far from the parking areas to get to these units, especially the central unit. So, after several iterations, we modified the plan now. We separated that large L-shaped building here, so now we still maintain full access around the perimeter of this building. We have a parking area here that provides access to these units. And Building A here, which is the whole bottom floor, 6,000 square feet, is the retail. They're divided up into 2,000 square foot suites, is on the bottom floor, which is fully accessible by Monahan Crossing. Building C here is also able to be accessed around all four sides. And then Building D here on the west side is also able to be accessed around all four sides. When we tried to modify the previous version, it ended up reducing the buffer to the backyards of the Abner's on Progress Street. It increased our previous numbers to above the allowed 50%. So, we ran into too many hurdles where it just wouldn't work. So, this configuration, breaking up the buildings in this fashion, has now gotten us to the point where we're underneath 50%, and we satisfied Chief Nuttall's concerns. So, we submitted these plans, we reviewed them. Beals and Thomas has reviewed them, Vanessa's reviewed them for traffic. We did hire a traffic consultant, so Green International Affiliates did a full traffic study for us at the site. Corinne Tobias from Green International is here, so when we get to traffic, I will, I'll leave the building and have her come in to address those comments and concerns for discussion purposes. And the, I guess the main, the main change is beyond what I just discussed, really was just a procedural shifting around of the same infiltration basins. So, stormwater-wise and utility-wise, it all works, still functions as it was designed previously. We've provided, we've provided landscape buffers around the Summer Street edge, along the Progress Street edge. Now, on the backside of the building, on Progress Street, we're proposing a fence and significant landscaping, so there will be a large vegetated buffer between the parking area on the western side of Building D and the Progress Street property line. Leave now, the minimum buffer is 60 feet, and the maximum is about 80 feet of buffer, which is significantly more than what we had previously proposed in the last iteration of plans. One other change in this development was, we had come in before with 160 units, then we're down to 150 units. We're back now to 156 units with this final development plan. It actually reduces the number of people from the 150-unit development, because we've gotten rid of a lot of two-bedrooms and added more single one-bedroom apartments. So, even though it's six more units than what was previously proposed, it's significantly less people who will be on the, in these buildings now because of the one-unit building designations. So, I don't know if you want to go through individually any of the review comments by, let's see here. So, Beals and Thomas or Vanessa at this point. I have all the other development plans, utility plans, landscape plans, drainage plans that we could look at and review. Like I said, everything basically stayed the same. All I had to do was shift one basin over. Down here, we have one basin that used to be on this side, is on this side. Because of the way we shifted, and we still have the basins within the footprints of the test pits that were conducted. The response to comment, or the comment letter we received from Beals and Thomas procedurally had clerical issues, so we revised a couple drainage inconsistencies. We had a spreadsheet that was in the final drainage analysis. That was part of a previous filing, so it was just the wrong sheet was in it. So, it's all pretty much procedural graphical modifications that were required, which was submitted as part of the set that we revised and submitted to the town beginning of July. So, that said, again, had been reviewed, and we received comments back from both Transportation and Beals and Thomas, that everything has been addressed in a couple of recommendations. What's left is adequate, just to address as a condition of approval. So, if there's anything specific you guys wanted to talk about with respect to the site plan, I'd be happy to try to answer your questions or show you the other plans that we have.
Can we move on right now to Mass and Beals and Thomas?
Okay.
Get their responses to your plan comments.
Certainly.
So, actually quoting Beals and Thomas, here to engineer on the civil side for this project. As the applicant indicated, all of our comments, at least from an engineering standpoint, have been addressed. There are some more administrative items regarding the zoning and different things that no one's approved, so most of the test issues will work themselves out or go away. But again, like an engineering standpoint, they're all our concerns are addressed.
Jeffrey Dirk and Vanessa Associates, the town's traffic consultant on the project. So, as was mentioned, the applicant did submit a full traffic study for the project. They reviewed the traffic study, provided some comments, to which they responded. And only items, obviously, conditions of approval with the board suggest that you consider if you're in contact, favorable renovation. But there's no outstanding technical items, they've addressed all of those.
One concern, of course, was fire truck access to the site. And the rest is a part of your place, Chief.
We did meet with Corin a couple of times, or it was once in person, stationed prior to the shutdown. Since then, we've had monitor zone meetings with them, feeling depth, and they submitted two new plans to deal with all the concerns that we have. So, the last plans that I've seen, and assuming there's been no revisions from them, any revisions are assuming we can reaccess. We can have full access to every building completely around it. We can pull up every main entryway to correct, and address any issue for the requiredness, for the elements that direct us to the doorways that prior to that we put in. And then, from the ends of the building, walk up to the doorway, which, as crazy as that sounds, we're supposed to carry fire hose, pressures, medical equipment. That was a big deal. People like find it into a brownstone on Mass Ave of Boston by getting the building and then walking it. I think that they understood that actually being we had last was good. So, that concern has been addressed front and back, and we have access to facilities, as well as there was one area that was going to be a partial, like a landscaping type of caving. That's all paved at this point, I think that's all asphalt now, because we had concerns whether that was vehicles, what the trucks were, whether it was even going to be piled or whatever. I believe we can categorically run down the entire list of the fire department had concerns, and we didn't address anything in that.
Okay, Chief. For the public record, I want to read into the record the letter of July 16, 2020, Avenue Planning Board, Avenue, Avenue Crossing. I'll try to speak a little bit with the microphone. Center Avenue Realty Trust wants to be on record at the 50-foot east, running parallel to Progress Street. The proposed Avenue Crossing development is shown on site plan dated April 12, 2019, revised October 11, 2019, December 13, 2019, and January 20, 2020, has not been abandoned, and the planning board are obligated to rely on the current record titles. Sincerely, David, President, Trustee, Center Avenue Realty Trust. So, do you have any more, from your perspective, do you have anyone else you want to present?
I would, I think for the Abner's consideration, I'd like to have the traffic consultant speak to the traffic site that they performed, which might help ease some of their concerns, or at least give a better understanding of what kind of traffic impact this project's going to have on the public and the surrounding streets.
All right, you can bring it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you should wait. We're trying to hear everyone, give them a chance to speak, give more to comment, do some comments, questions, that all, I think we'll be okay. On Council, coming, Liz. Who's posted? Who's in both of them?
I know the last few, she has some concerns and expectations on the video, listening. I don't spend a lot of them.
But I can also just answer questions, it's whatever's easier.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, of course. My name's Corinne Tobias. I'm a traffic engineer with Green International Affiliates. We prepared the traffic study for this project, as well as the response to the peer review comments by Jeffrey Dirk. And, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions you have about traffic this evening. If you'd like, I can give kind of a brief...
A physical brief?
Overview, sure. I do. Is there a screen or someplace to do a PowerPoint here at this time?
I don't think so.
So, we know we need one.
No, those don't do.
Okay, sorry about that. If you don't mind, I will do my best to read from my notes and...
That's great, thank you.
So, for this project, we're looking at 156 residential units, as well as associated retail. And for the traffic study, we examined the two driveways for the MBTA, one along Center Street and one along Summer Street, as well as two signalized intersections, Summer Street at Pomast Street, Center Street at Pomast Street, and two unsignalized intersections, which is Center Street and Walnut Street, and Center Street, I'm sorry, and Summer Street and Walnut Street. In order to do this, due to the reduction in traffic based on COVID, we did use historical traffic data at these locations. And then we followed MASTG procedures to bring them up to today's traffic volumes, essentially as outlined in their new COVID guidelines for handling old traffic data. So, we were able to find historical information at this location in order to avoid having a reduced count due to the COVID situation.
Just a second, Corinne.
Yeah?
Could you explain the COVID guidelines as far as traffic counts, please?
Absolutely. So, in general, MASTGOT, TIAS guidelines don't let you use traffic counts that are more than two years old. However, they've now issued an exception for that, based on the availability of data and the inability to collect it today. And in doing so, they've specified exactly what growth rates are required for each year. So, for example, depending on what year and where the location of the count was, they'll tell you exactly how much you need to grow it to represent existing conditions. So, that's, that's the process that we followed, and that's based on their own studies of how much traffic has grown since that time. So, we followed those guidelines in order to bring the older traffic volumes up to existing conditions. Does that...
It's important for folks to understand that, because now you drive a council, we don't have a union because of the COVID, and, you know, I think that's a concern to folks.
Absolutely.
That's a good point.
Yeah, of course. And the goal there is to just get the most accurate reflection of what today's counts would be like under normal conditions. And in addition to that, we also did have, so these are the turning movement counts at the intersections, but we also were able to find a 48-hour count on Summer Street as well, which shows the daily traffic as well, which was about 7,000 vehicles per day. Sorry, that was, yes, on Summer Street.
How many?
That was 300.
Yeah? Sorry?
I couldn't hear, sorry.
Okay. Yep. About 7,073 vehicles per day on Summer Street.
That's over 24 hours.
Over a 24-hour period, correct.
One direction or both directions?
Both directions. So, then we projected the traffic that would be generated by this site using ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineer, TRIP. Institute of Transportation Engineer Trip Generation Rates, which is the industry standard practice. And for this site, we found that there would be 1,142 trips daily. However, given the location on an MBTA facility, we did take a multiple credit for transit based on census data for Addington. And that resulted in 951 vehicle trips per day. So it's 1,142 total trips, of which 951 will be by vehicle. During the AM peak hour, there's...
Just explain that a little bit more, that because it's a train station.
Of course.
The trip, the original 1,100 number includes trips people would take on the train.
Correct. So that's, those are people, you know, given the location directly adjacent to MBTA commuter rail, we felt that utilizing the census data says, for example, that for the entire city of Addington, for the entire town of Addington, a certain percentage uses transit. And so we applied that percentage to this site. Then, if anything, I think it's probably a little bit conservative, given the location adjacent to an MBTA facility. It would probably be higher than the average for the entire town of Addington. And then for the AM peak hour, we estimate there would be 72 total trips, of which 60 would be taken by vehicle. And during the PM peak hour, there would be 87 total trips, of which 73 would be vehicle trips. And the remaining would be transit. So we did perform a level. Absolutely. Sorry about that. We also did perform, is this better? Yep. Sorry about that. A level of service analysis for the proposed intersection locations. And what we found generally was that between no build and the build condition, there wasn't a significant impact to the level of service of these intersections. However, there are some locations that, under the future no build condition, are going to see some capacity constraints, and those will continue under the build condition. So just to clarify, for the site driveways at Summer Street and Center Avenue during the AM and PM peak hour, we do, we have analyzed that those will be at a level of service B and C for the AM and PM peak hour respectively. So just to give you a sense of level of service, it's an A to an F scale, where A is the best and F is the worst. And C and D is, is pretty average, especially for a peak hour condition. However, in the future AM, there is one location that does show a level of service E, which is the Plymouth Street at Center Avenue intersection. And just to be clear, that's under the no build and the build conditions in the future. And then for the future PM, Plymouth Street at Summer Street and Plymouth Street at Center Avenue show a level of service F and a level of service E under both the no build and the build conditions. So we have recognized that there are some capacity issues there in the future. But in general, they are not going to be significantly impacted by this proposed development. In addition, we looked at the crash history for these locations. Center Avenue of Plymouth Street does show a higher-than-average crash rate of 0.8 from 2015 to 2017. That's about 22 crashes. And the district average is 0.75, so it's just over the district average. The most common types were rear-end angle crashes, which are typical for a traffic signal, especially with left turns. However, it was not identified as a HSIP location, which is a state database that identifies the high-crash locations that, across the state. So it was slightly above average, but it was not identified as a particularly egregious area by the state. In addition to that, I believe there was another comment from Walnut Street and Center Street, which was slightly above average. However, the majority of those crashes, or not majority, about 40% took place in 2015. And then after that, there was a significant drop-off. And if you look at more recent data, including 2018 and 2019, which are not closed out, but are still fairly complete in the MAST DOT database, you'll see a lower number of crashes in those years as well. And so for that location, it was not considered quite, it seemed to be already being resolved through the crash data. All the other locations had crash rates below the district averages. And about 70% of all the crashes were property damage only and did not include any injuries. Finally, we looked at site distance for the two driveways, and we found that the site distances were met for both the intersection and the stopping site distance, in particular when the vegetative clearing for the site drive construction is completed. So in general, we are, we have recommended some signal timing improvements, and we've received the comments from the peer reviewer about examining clearance times, in particular for the signalized intersection, to see if that is something that can be updated to help resolve the crash issue at that location, as well as some of the congestion. In addition to that, we've agreed to construct a south crosswalk across the Addington commuter rail station access road in conjunction with the reserved parking area. We'll be providing sidewalk improvements along the site driveway and implement all ADA-compliant crossings needed for those crosswalk locations to improve pedestrian accessibility to the commuter rail facility for the town, not just the project. And finally, agreed to implement a number of transportation demand management services so that people living on-site will be more incentivized to utilize the public transit facility through information and additional incentives to utilize the T. Okay? And that's, that's all I've got. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, because we're, because we have to look at the people in the room, and ask the following, if you could ask the following, ask anyone else who wants to present. Then I think we're going to have the board questions, and then we'll open it up to the public. I think we're going to have to have you here to answer questions to the board and the other experts.
Understood. I, I can say fairly conclusively that I believe this is it for presentations, but if you would like, I can still just go back up and double check. Absolutely. I'll be right back. And just to be clear, do you want me to come back first, or would you like Brian back first? He gave the first presentation. I'll come my first. Yep, absolutely. That's all we have for presenters this evening.
Okay. Well, I guess we're going to start with your questions from the board, and since you're here, I agree, I think you will be, I know I've got a number of private questions. I'll start with members of the board.
Can I, can you start?
Yeah. I'm going to start with Matthew Cody.
Yes.
Who, just for the audience understanding, is our consultant on this project. It's not the proponent's consultant. This is our guy who's reviewed their work on our behalf.
Excuse me, Paul. Would he an engineer for the project, or would he also familiar with the traffic stuff?
I'm sorry?
Is he an engineer for the project on our behalf, or is he also familiar with the traffic stuff?
No, he's, he's the town's traffic engineer.
Traffic, okay, good. Thank you.
So.
Mr. Cody is representing the town.
Yes.
Just to clarify how the counts were done, it took a couple, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Joe. The counts were viewed done using old traffic counts.
2019.
2019. Since when the Bruce did?
Yeah, I believe that was. I didn't do the old column planning. The old, you're right, old column. There was data for the old column planning, it was as prior traffic studies on the death of the project in the area of 2019.
And then they just took the factor of how much it would have grown over the time to get a better clue what the numbers were, because if you went and stood out there in March, April, May, you're not going to get an accurate count because everybody's at home.
That's correct. There's both factors that are to figure. I've been doing this for 37 years. There's both factors that are to figure.
The counts having been done while school has been in effect, and the fact that this is a route used by school buses, how would that change how come of the numbers?
School wasn't. School, yeah, we're not machines, but school. Yeah, June 26th.
I'm, I'm not sure if school is in session.
School didn't have any session. Did you confirm?
So just how putting a dozen buses on those roads in the morning, the afternoon, would that, how would that impact the final study?
If, if I'm right.
If they did, so they applied the adjustments in 2019, so this, there was an inflation of traffic volumes by half a percent, essentially. It's unlikely that in June 26th, in June of this year, the traffic was, even if there wasn't, if they were not, there's some, so I think there's some, to some extent, there's roads that may have fallen to the base track. And given the fact, as was mentioned, it's about 7,000 vehicles per day, a half a percent increase in traffic volumes would account for any increase that would be associated with the 12 square meters.
In addition to that, we do look at seasonal data. So, you know, we compare the month of June to an average month. So I'll be honest, off the top of my head, I can't tell you what that was. But, but to that point is that even though you may lose some traffic from school, you may be gaining it from other places, and that June in general is not a low generating traffic month.
What your findings talks about in the ITE trip generation data for low-rise multifamily was then to result in higher traffic volumes on both a daily, peak hour basis, which I'm trying to understand. The thing that you're saying is that we use the standard traffic generation data tends to be a conservative estimate, almost an overestimate of what it generates. Is that my understanding of what you're saying?
So there's a couple of things to that. So when, when we look at multifamily developments, there's basically three classifications. There's multifamily with low rise, which means it's less than two stories for less. There's multifamily with mid-rise, which is maybe a 10 stories. And then there's high-rise, which is about 10 stories. So our comment with the trip generation is that these buildings are more than two stories high, so that the appropriate land use code, the shilling use was multifamily with mid-rise. If they applied multifamily with mid-rise trip generation to this project, would it actually result in a lot of sense, would it result in lower traffic? So the fact they used the wrong land use code actually resulted in higher traffic, instead of they used the lower land use code. The other thing that we pointed out was, I know there was discussion about the transit adjustments. They did not apply transit adjustment. They, they pointed out the fact that they expect that there would be a decrease in traffic associated with the use of public transportation. However, when they did their analysis, they did not assume any public transportation use. So the comment was really, there's a compounding of things that are going on here that resulted in inflating traffic volumes.
So the 1,142 of yearly trips.
Right.
In your opinion, is a very conservative estimate of what the project will generate for, for Summer Street?
That's correct.
Okay. And the estimate also is that 72 car trips in the morning, 84, excuse me, 72 trips total, 84 total in PM, in the peak hour. Is that 74 just coming into the site? Or is that?
It's two in traffic.
So it would be 35 in 35 out potentially?
Yeah, it's actually more than going on in the morning. Just give you the results. In the morning, it's 17 entering and 55 exiting. And then in the evening, it's, so you have the total of 87. It's 55 entering and 32 exiting for a total of 87.
Okay. So the assumption that we're working with here is that this project will result in 17 additional vehicle trips into the site on the peak hour in the morning.
Correct.
And 55 trips out of the site, keep morning.
Correct.
And 55 coming in in the evening and 32 going out.
That's correct.
And those, do you have to know, I mean, if they got you here?
It's okay.
What the total peak flow is during the morning? So if we're adding 55 cars in the morning to Summer Street, what is that comparison to? How many are already on there?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I, I can't answer. If you give me a minute, I do have that information, if you'd like me to.
I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
The percentage increase.
Yeah.
Yeah. So like, 55 cars going out in the morning, that's, that's like one car a minute.
Right. So it's five, the numbers on Summer Street, so the daily number is 7,073. The morning peak hour, which is 7:15 to 8:15, is 520. So it's 72 on top of 520. And in the evening, which is 5 to 6 is the peak hour, is 576. So it's 87 added 576. But I do want, I want to clarify that as well. They have two access points. Some of it's, it's not all coming out of Summer Street. So you could look at it that way, if you want to apply it all to Summer Street, but there's, they have traffic also going out to the side of the site as well. So it's coming out of Center Avenue.
It looks like we're talking 10, 11, 12% increase in what's already there. Is that accurate?
If, if it was all going out, if it was all going out to Summer Street, that's right. So what they have is about, let's just call it 67. So call it 730, where 70% roughly is going out to Summer Street, 30% is heading out to Center Avenue. Rough, just really rough.
Couple more questions. The, they talked about the impact on the intersections around the area. And according to the report I hear from you, the Plymouth Street, Summer Street intersection is, would that get worse if they built this, or would it, it's already a failing intersection?
Right, it would get worse because it can't process, what the analysis is showing is it can't process the traffic that it's already receiving. Right, it would get worse because it can't process, what the analysis is showing is it can't process the traffic that it's already received. And so, because of that, even though there, you know, as Mr. Scruggs described, maybe an incremental increase, but what it ends up being is you can't process the traffic that's there now, so you're just gonna add to it. So, the queuing is going to increase on those approaches because you can't physically get the existing cars through there, so if you add more to it, it's just gonna cause the backup to get longer. But that's without mitigation. So, that gets to, the applicant needs to implement a specific mitigation to offset.
And is it possible by adjusting the signals at that intersection, the fifty-eight Summer Street intersection, to fix the intersection so that it's a better experience? So, you're not sitting there for thirty-six seconds?
Correct, that's exactly right, so we, we suggested that the applicant is agreed to undertake the traffic signal timing improvements that are necessary to offset their impact and create a little bit more capacity, so it should be a net betterment over conditions that would exist had they not done anything and not done their project. Okay, could you, just to break me in, I don't know what to say, you mentioned that no section, but, okay, so two things. Could you explain what safety guidelines and could you also explain incremental improvements to the intersection that would result in improved traffic? So, that's two questions, I'm sorry.
Dogs and assholes anyway.
So, there's, as the applicants, applicants here had mentioned, there were three locations where the calculated crash rate exceeds the state average, and that's DOT average. So, the number of crashes that are happening at the intersections is disproportionate to the volume of traffic on the area. So, those three intersections were the two signalized intersections. Signalized intersection is Center and Plymouth Street, and then two unsignalized intersections, one of which is the access into the D A stations, which is the Summer Street, N B T and driveway intersection, and then the Summer Street, Walnut Street intersection. So, those are the three high crash locations. We've suggested that the applicant, and they've agreed to do this, is undertake traffic signal timing changes at the two signalized intersections, which are Plymouth and Summer and Plymouth and Center. And which heard the applicant, so those traffic signal timing changes, what was found when the applicant did their analysis was that the signals, the traffic signals are not operating optimally, meaning that it's giving too much green time for one movement and not enough to another movement. So, there's the ability to re-time that traffic signal, to have it operate more efficiently and reduce queuing, reduce delays in queuing in the intersection. So, that's in order to offset their incremental increase in terms of added delay in queuing that the project is creating. The applicant is agreed to re-time that traffic signal to make it operate more efficiently so that they will be able to process more traffic and offset the added traffic that they're adding to the intersection. So, the analysis is suggesting that after they implement these improvements, the delays will be reduced, the queuing will be reduced, such that they will queue the improvement over conditions prior to the applicant adding traffic. So, that's the net benefit. The other thing to respect is safety, and the applicant's traffic engine mentioned this. We've asked the applicant too, as a part of that re-timing, is to look at the yellow and all red clearance intervals. So, that's really the time that allows for, if you haven't passed through the intersection, to pass through the intersection before it turns red. And if you're stuck in the intersection, the all red clearance gives you time to get out of the intersection before the green light comes up in the other direction. A lot of times, the signal timing, in fact, those calculations that come up with how long should it be yellow, how long should it be all red, have changed over time. There's new guidance that N S D O T has to those timing parameters. So, we've asked the applicant, who's a part of this re-timing exercise, in order to address that crashes that are happening, to make sure that the yellow and all red clearance intervals meet current design standards. So, that's something that they're going to do at the signalized intersections. Now, the two unsignalized intersections that have high crash rates are Walnut Street and the driveway to the site essentially. So, the driveway to the site, the applicant is gonna undertake sign and pavement marking changes as well as vegetation clearing, subject to getting the appropriate approvals, I believe it's actually an fire, not a, I think, of the intersection. So, they would need talent from the mall essentially to do some of this vegetation clearing. So, the sign and pavement marking improvements combined with vegetation clearing will address safety at the access into the site of Summer Street. At the Walnut Street intersection, I know the applicant has represented that the traffic number crashes is going down. That location is a location that we've suggested that the applicant undertake further study of safety at that intersection. And we've suggested that a road safety audit can perform. And so, the road safety audit is essentially a study specific to the intersection that involves the town's participation as well as the regional planning agency to discuss the types of crashes that are happening and then what level of improvement could be, or types of improvements that could be added to the intersection. It would accommodate not only address the crashes, but also address pedestrian and bicycle accommodations and other features that may not be there or may need to be included. So, this study is basically getting all of the officials together with the regional planning agency to discuss improvements at that intersection. And then that gets published in a report, which is the road safety audit. And that road safety audit would list all of the suggested improvement measures that come out of the study. And those measures would be classified as short-term, low-cost, so that's basically the low-hanging fruit, signs, pavement markings, vegetation clearing. Things that can be done in the short term, and they generally cost less than ten thousand dollars to do for two by thousands. And then there's this intermediate term, kind of mid-cost improvements, which are more robust, that involve geometric changes in the intersection. And then there's the long-term, high-cost, so that would be something on the order of installing a traffic signal at the intersection. But the road safety audit lays out all of those improvements and it takes all of the input from public officials, the planning agency, and that's what ultimately is published, is a part of the document. And the key thing for that, you may have heard this through some presentations I've done before, is that then that allows the town to leverage state funding through the planes and actually implement these improvements. Some of the short-term, low-cost things are the things that could be done as a part of maintenance activities. So, again, that's kind of the low-hanging fruit things. But the other items are leveraged by this study to allow for the time to escape funding. And so, we've suggested that the applicant commit to undertaking that level of study at the intersection to be able to allow the town to make some informed decisions as to either leveraging some grant funds or as other development happens, to be able to ask that applicants commit or contribute money to do a portion of those improvements. Correct. Conceivably, this project on the old college planning council, transportation.
Exactly, yes.
I work for old college planning council, disclosure. We have something called Transportation Improvement Program, and it's counting for transportation improvements in the town. For example, printing weapons, just as street interceptions to give them now, other improvements we've done. But conceivably, this could be asked on technical or for improvement, but that's just another option the town has. I've done several participations, road safety audits, and they are very, and they really actually do sound incredible. We generally recommend, in this case, it doesn't cost the town any money, but it allows the town to be able to apply for these grant funds that otherwise wouldn't be available.
So, just to finish up on that thing, these are, just for the audience's understanding, these are the conditions that we will be asking the proponent to include in the project collection, to ask, we'll be including, making them do. One is to improve the intersection signals at Plymouth Street and Summer Street, that's fifty-eight and Summer Street, and Plymouth Street and Center Avenue, so that's fifty-eight and one twenty-three. And they would have to complete those before they reach sixty percent occupancy of the development. So, this isn't that they have to, they finish everything, everybody moves in, then they do it, it's sixty percent into occupancy. These intersections need to be improved. And that'll be based on their building permit, their occupancy permit, people won't be able to move in unless the condition is met. The second is that they'll have to do the safety audit that we just heard Mr. Jeffrey talk about. The third is this idea of a transportation demand management program, which means that the management team of the buildings would have to take certain steps. Have a coordinator to talk to residents about taking commuter rail or public transportation, including information about the commuter rail and the welcome packets they get, create work-at-home workspaces to support telecommuting, mail drop, so that people will not get in their cars and drive places, but can either walk, bike, take the train, and not add to the traffic flow in the area. And then also make sure that there's, visibility remains improved on the turnout from the station up to Summer Street by keeping the vegetation back so that there's better sightlines. So, those are the conditions that we're gonna be putting on in this project. I'm sorry?
Do you have any more questions?
That's it for now.
Well, do you have any questions?
Yes, because I think I must have missed it. The intersection of Summer and Washington Street, I didn't even talk about the eighteen.
So, that's, that's correct. I'll say this, that, you know, unfortunately, to a certain extent, we were limited by the available data that we had that was, you know, because we couldn't go out and take new counts for new intersections. So, to a certain extent, we were limited to the available data that was out there. So, those, that was in part what informed our study area was the locations that we had the information. But in addition, we also looked at which ones would be most impacted by this project. And so, the further out you get, the more that traffic dissipates. So, those were kind of some of the criteria that informed the study area.
Because it's only a short distance away from the Walnut Street intersection, and that's where all the cars, and it's bad enough down at Plymouth Street with the queuing in a very narrow road, but it's no matter the lot, the team is doing hard, they're coming up the hill, and you're queuing. And you're at the nurse's, someone's at the next door, the track breaks free, but also, also very tough. You see sightlines disappear, or the, the team, you try and pull up, can't see all of the tracks coming up, going up, running through. I don't see how we'd skip that intersection, what they've done with that, that will add any of the dangers. But that seems to be a great, as many, as much of a good player as Plymouth Street and Summer Street.
Yeah, I, I would like to make that comment. We did ten million counts, but the ten intersections are one of that color, the signalized, one of the ones in Summer and Plymouth Street. I actually did the ten million counts. Yeah, it's, if really got to include Summer and Plymouth Street, you know, the traffic analysis for this. But I sat there and, you know, and, and, sorry.
Do you, is that information that you have available that you can share with us?
On the O C P C website, Old College Planning Council website, just traffic council. Or, just keep with that, that section on your C P C website. You could get the ten million counts with the, and also the G's and the X's. Matter of fact, it's, it's, so all that information is on the O C P C website. As I've reminded, I gave some traffic data, you were paying the price, and if you weren't, you should be able to figure out that access to the end, so. And anyone else from public, you can go on the Old College Planning Council website, we've got traffic counts, and it's there. That's public service, it's on notice.
Well, we wanted to do, to have that look at yours, but the, I, the detail is on that inside. When you cross this, when you cross past the morning and, and entrance, you get the air brakes, and then you gather, and see how you're going to the right inside. I've seen your, seen the citizens center on the right inside. I don't know what their hours of, you saw where, if there's conflict with fifty-five cars coming out during that time, is that the time on senior going in there for activities? I don't know, have you looked at the timing of, because if they, if they can't get in, they get out safely, then the traffic would really get ninety, what do you mean?
So, those vehicles would have been included in the existing counts, correct?
The, just the, what you're, just the numbers, I don't know if you're, your screen counts, all I should be saying, the screen count overall. But it's, it's the timing of the two exits being so close to each other and having a train in between that, that seems to be important to look at how, not to make any more dangerous words, but seeing that we might have to exit the tunnel. But I don't know what the sightlines are there, but I think that they have a kind of top of that all vegetation, and that's called.
Yeah, so we did do a sight, a sightline analysis to improve the sightline conditions at that, at the site driveways. And I will say that, you know, in terms of functionally, the capacity at the site driveways was not seen as a, as an issue.
Well, one thing, I have a number, although at the worst times, the fifty-five trips, you had certain time, the train, if it's one direction. Your overall count, if you worked out that, it's increasing the traffic that a person living in their household they want, that's the probably least that are concerned, that fifty-five cars, it's the additional one thousand cars that, that are going to pass their house at this rate. The cumulative of experiencing all that, it's a fourteen percent increase in traffic on Summer Street. There's by adding this development there over the entire day, over the entire day, people live there, the entire day, they have to withstand that earth. There are plenty of examples where there were once much slower roads, and then they became, they became highways.
So, I do want, as was stated earlier, it's not a hundred percent of the trips are gonna end up on Summer Street. There is some split with Center as well. So, only about seventy percent of those trips are actually headed to Summer Street, and the other thirty percent will be on Center Street.
Let's actually explain, the other thing is, what are sightlines, we look at sightlines, how do they look?
Okay, so there's two different things that we look at, one is stopping site distance, and the other one is intersection site distance. And the idea with stopping site distance is that if there's a fixed object in the road, how much time is it going, how much distance is it going to take an average car to stop traveling at the eighty-fifth percentile speed? And that distance is called the stopping site distance, and that's kind of your minimum safety criteria. And so, so the idea is if someone pulls out of an intersection, like a T intersection into the road, how long is it going to take someone to stop so they don't hit that car? The other thing that we look at, intersection site distance is related a little bit more to operations. And that's more about how far can someone who's pulling out see so that they can make that movement without forcing a vehicle to stop for them? So, that you avoid that condition altogether. And, and that measurement is generally taken back from the, from the edge of the road, from the edge of the intersection, about fourteen and a half feet back. So, if you're pulling up to a T, if you're pulling up to a T intersection, and when you're about fourteen and a half feet back from the edge of the roadway, the new roadway, how far can you see so that you can make that turn without forcing someone on the main road to stop for you? And so, we found with a little bit of clearing and vegetation around the driveway entrances, that both the stopping site distance and the intersection site distance could be met so that there wouldn't be a safety concern with someone pulling out of one of the site driveways and, and getting hit by someone who didn't see them, either on Center Street or on Summer Street.
I used to do stopping site distance.
How'd I do?
Any other questions? I'll wait for Mrs. Shay to return for a moment.
Yep.
I'm just gonna wait for Liz to come back, because she's, she takes a big, you know, notice. Even though this is on television, I still wanna make sure the board's second script is. I guess I'll ask you to stay.
Yeah, that's fine. Does the board have any comments for our civil engineer or?
Yes, but we stick with.
We'll do traffic, yeah, that's fine.
The president had you on the back. So, when we get, when Mrs. Shay goes back, we'll ask you folks if you have any questions. ask you folks if you have any questions. I'm going to open up the public comment, and when I'm supposed to say I have a question. I'm sorry, we didn't have a call.
No, it's okay. It's, I've been doing a lot of Zoom hearings, so for, you know.
It's nice to actually be back and question.
This would be my first back.
We're all navigating a new normal.
Nice to get out of Austin, New York City, I don't have that condition.
Do you at least have a good ceiling fan?
They have ceiling fans, personally, but my, I'm working out of my home office, in Silver House, I'm afraid to plug in the air conditioner, because I've got one two thousand feet of power. So I deal with the fan. All right, Mrs. Shay is back. I'm going to open this up for, for public comment now, so we are a traffic expert here, if anyone in the audience has any traffic questions. I need you to come up for speaking to microphone and identify yourself, Amy, can I speak?
Fran Cronin, four fifty-eight Summer Street. I had a couple of questions. When you talked about the accommodations and what you've requested and what they've agreed to, you mentioned the crosswalks, but you didn't mention them. Isn't that something that you would also do? Okay. But nobody mentioned the lighting, and that's a big issue in that section, it's so dark there. And I was wondering who would be addressing that? Would that come out when you do your safety plan and make recommendations, or would that be a town thing, or would that be something?
Which intersection?
I'm talking where the development is, coming out there, turning, people walking, people accessing that whole corridor from the train station to, I'm focused more on Route fifty-eight. But it's dark the other way, too. So I'm just saying, lighting is an issue, and I'm not sure who would address that. Can you require them to provide lighting? Is that something you'd have to go to the town for?
Is it street lighting?
Street lighting.
Street lighting.
Yeah, it's dark.
Street lighting, Millville.
I mean, I put my light on, and people thank me for leaving my light on so they can see as they go by.
It's actually the town, the town, because the town pays the electric bill, so it's the town. The town will need to request National Bridge to install all lights at specific locations, and then National Bridge will generate a work order, won't do it, and then they build the town, what the other two towns.
Or could we ask the developer to pay for the lighting for that area, since they are increasing the traffic and the people walking and driving in that area? Because you know the town is going to have a problem paying for more lighting.
Your plan, like the type of, particularly if you're giving us this kind of lighting in there along the main street, and have to ask them that question, whether they, when they come in, to ask them whether or not, do they have lights to the rest rail up front there? It may be something they would want to address, but it's outside of scope, it's outside of the property.
So I didn't know if that was a traffic issue or development issue.
We, we, we have issued lighting plans to us. Unfortunately, the, the, I don't know if they, 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 they made sure the project, like, it's unheard of.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, I was wondering when your firm was hired by this company to do the study?
Before, I'd say, probably April.
April. Because when we had the meeting in February, that was a huge issue, and if they had hired someone in February, we would have completely accurate responses about what the traffic was, because until March sixteenth, when everything changed, there were tons of cars going by my house every day. So it's unfortunate that they didn't prioritize that with you.
I think it's actually something the board had requested that they asked to hire a traffic engineer to do the traffic study.
I think it was Wednesday, Friday.
No.
It was the next day.
Right.
It would have had six weeks to.
So it just feels like it wasn't considered by them a priority, but it is by the people who live on Summer Street.
Really.
Okay. And I guess the last question is, when you're talking about the study, you're saying at some point, we might be able to get grant money, but you're really not looking to the developer to provide any money for any mitigation?
Yes, no, I think we are, one of the requirements we have to prove this is to have this intersection included, as my co-member said, and generally, we'll have to require this developer to pay for the improvements. If there was a danger of doing an intersection, adding lanes and stuff like that, which, Jeff, it can be fixed with timing, then there's.
Right.
If there was another danger we do, like say, no, what you're doing in eighteen one thirty-nine, that's something we want to, but this isn't requiring, the mitigation requirements that have been made to this intersection to be done with the timing, the timing of lights. So that's not asking for grant, like, that's something the proponent.
Okay. Or is there a way, and I don't know if this is possible, to have a fund put aside for a period of time in case the mitigations that you plan on aren't sufficient, and you discover there's some big issues that have come as a result of this? I don't know if that's legal, I'm just asking.
Well, we, so I think, one of the things would affect the traffic signal timing, is we've suggested that the applicant, they, under, as mentioned, those intersections are operating poorly today.
Right.
So the suggestion would be, the consideration by the board, that they implement the timing changes today and now, subject to the Friday being approved, to fix the existing problem, and then that they come back at achieving sixty percent occupancy, and then determine if they have to change it again to accommodate their traffic patterns, so that it's, it accomplishes what you're looking for, which is to say, fix it now because it's not working today, and then let them occupy their car, they add traffic to those intersections, and then go back and see, do you need to fix it again because they now overburden the intersection again? And if they do, then they, then they need whatever improvements are necessary to adjust the timing to make it work. So it's kind of like a look at.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
You also have any questions, sir? Mr. David addressed it.
I'm Alvin Schneider of sixty-six Paragraf Street. My main concern right off the bat would be wanting to see some type of data and report off of Summer Street and eighteen, that's already really backed up. Eighteen is quickly expanding and widening to accommodate more volume heading every other way, and I love how the engineer brushes off that further way. Nobody's turning down Walnut Street when they take a right out of this development, they're going right out to eighteen. Walnut Street takes you nowhere. So that's definitely something I'd like to see taken a look at, along with what is the volume coming out of Abington Woods right there? Because that sees a lot of volume, that's a huge development already, that's adding a lot of congestion to that road area at the Summer Street point as it is. What type of volume is that development seeing coming out, at what time periods? Sounds like it would be very similar to what zero Summer Street would be, which would potentially be a real big cluster, especially with no sightlines of people coming out of Abington Woods versus coming out of zero Summer Street. It's asking for disaster right there.
Well, I know, so we, prior to the applicant undertaking their traffic study, the town had asked us, the captains, the conditions, and we look at the eighteen intersection, it's going to be no surprise to you, the captains are failing intersection, so that effort would extend it that way. And I think, you know, that's, without them doing their analysis, they're just, the intersection is an unsupervised intersection, which you know, you can't get off that, so the traffic matters. What we described is basically, it's probably, based on the volume of traffic, it's, it's a, you know, either a roundabout or a traffic, one or the other, but it needs some type of positive control to stop the traffic on Route eighteen, to give you a chance that should get into that traffic stream there. So that the analysis is already saying, today, that's, that's a conclusion. So their traffic will not get through that intersection, it's just going to increase the backups that happen there. So you, you probably don't need that without them analyzing it. But that, that's what it's going to show you, because our analysis suggested that that's what's going on there today. And the solution is, traffic signal or roundabout or, or something that's been a lot, where you get, get an equal opportunity to get off of Summer Street and get on the eighteen. The, the sightline issues are something that we've asked them to address, so I think they committed to doing the vegetation clearance, so hopefully now that'll clear up some of the issues we respect, and we can see getting out of any of the problems essentially along that border.
So what kind of numbers, though? We need some solid evidence. How many units is Abington Woods? And then I also find it very disturbing that the traffic engineer hired by the developer has no numbers or data, claims that there's no data available for the eighteen.
The reds, and I think that's, you heard, because we have data available.
Right, so how can she not find it?
She, she, I think the board has made it very clear, and as I've seen, that they want her specifically look at that intersection and analyze the data. There is available things, they won't be able to do that. And it's pretty much, I told you, but, you know, they should update their own analysis, confirm those findings, and then, I think, to your point, is saying, well, how much worse is going to get with larger traffic to it? And then only know what potential solutions are, so I think the applicants write that after the traffic is analyzed.
Okay, and as far as Abington Woods right there, are, what's going to be with that output? Because that's already a huge backup right there.
Yeah, I think it's going to show up in the data, it should be in the traffic council, that it will be included.
I'm having a hard time believing with their traffic counts of how many cars go back and forth every day is taken into account, how many cars are stopping to allow people pull out, how many people are stopping to go across with that intersection right there, causing congestion.
That's not going to show up, unfortunately, it's not going to show up. It's going to be, it's going to be over experienced, it's right, if someone stops, allows traffic out, then it causes a backup, that's not going to be included in the data.
So you can time your lights up there all you want, all day long, if you're not accommodating the number of vehicles stopping going into that development as it is, along with the poorly timed railroad crossings also. Haven't heard anything with that and the time delay in that. Those gates go down long before the train, and they even stay down past. So you can, a lot of what I'm hearing through this traffic engineer, no offense, isn't making sense with what the physical conditions are in that area currently.
And then there's going to be distinct times exactly that happen, as you described, when the railroad, when the gate's down, no one's going anywhere, until that gate comes back up, or a situation where you said if someone's stopping, you let someone get a turn. Certain of those instantaneous variants, and until those conditions, you know, the gates go back out, or the person makes that turn, it's going to gate down.
Right, so a less than ten percent, or a less than point five percent increase on the road volume doesn't sound too bad until you're really thinking about how many are going in and out of this development here that's already existing and everything else. These are all things that really can't be pushed under the rug, and almost sounds like they kind of are trying to get pushed under the rug from the analysis that was read tonight.
Yeah, the capacity analysis is not, like, the condition you just described, is it's what you make sample planes on the roadway, and what happens with those distinct intersection counts.
And we're talking a hundred and fifty yards away from each other, these two driveways. I can only wait until seeing the accidents that happen through this point already, because I know they're not pretty already, cars pulling out of each of those areas, especially with them clashing in the same timeframes of morning rush hour commutes. So that's really something that should definitely be taken into account, that seems to have not been.
I'm Paul Breadmore, I live at sixty, Summer Street. For the past five years, I've been coming out of that train station at five o'clock, and for as much volume as goes up to fifty-eight, there are a number of cars that make the right to avoid that light, cut down a walnut, make a left on walnut, and they'll cut people off. And when you say seven thousand cars up and down this street, I don't care if it's a ten percent increase, you just added seven hundred cars to people that are walking with families to either get to the train or just out walking right now, especially during COVID. Mr. Collins brought up buses for school, but what wasn't brought up is the vans that go up and down, the school vans that go back and forth during those school days. There's a lot of data that wasn't captured here because this developer waited too long. I don't agree with these numbers. We can take studies, but those studies didn't include the Abington Dog Park being there, new development that's gone up around this area over the past year, this increased traffic flow up and down Summer Street, fifty-eight, Center Street, everywhere, and we're in two, a very small congested area to have this kind of a traffic increase. And I think it's great that they've restructured their buildings and everything to allow for safety precautions within their development, but what no one has talked about tonight, we've heard it before, is can the town handle the safety required to manage another property like this? It's great that we can get our fire apparatus and our police in there and everything else, that's great, but we're adding a number of residents to this town when we're already The traffic is a huge concern on Summer Street. I've been here for twenty-five years, I've only seen it get worse and worse. And now we're putting public safety at risk by adding this number of people in a congested area. I am glad to hear that it's recognized that more traffic is going to come out to Summer Street than the other way, because everyone's looking for the shortcut, and not everyone's going up to fifty-eight. They are coming back up towards Route eighteen, towards Walnut Street, to find another access out to avoid the light, because they utilize that when the train is crossing to come down and cut off the train. You're putting people at risk here. And I don't know what the whole answer is, but if we're jeopardizing other people to make room for more that we can't fit, there's already an inherent problem here. People have come out because they have concerns about, you know, the woodlands around us, the volume of people growing around us just in this small area. This isn't Route one thirty-nine, where you can put up a bunch of condos and people can whip through. This is Summer Street. It's supposed to be a slow-moving street for family safety, for public safety. And anyone that lives on Summer Street can tell you that they use it as a dragway at night, especially on the weekends, and we haven't even discussed weekend traffic. People going out shopping, people going, just to get groceries, that's going to increase these numbers exponentially. I have a wife, I have kids, we get in and out of our driveway every day, and it is already unbearable to try and maneuver this. We go out at midnight and turn our cars around so we can pull out straight, and now you want to add all these extra cars and all this traffic. It's a problem. And I don't have a solution, but if you don't have a traffic study that includes Route eighteen before this even starts, that's a huge problem. And adjusting the traffic lights isn't going to be the answer. You can adjust the traffic lights all you want, it doesn't change the number of cars you're dealing with. We keep coming back to these meetings, and they haven't done their homework, they haven't done the process to gather all their data, so we have to keep coming back. And it's unfortunate, because they seem like they're willing to do it in their own time. They should have done it back in February. We didn't know coronavirus was coming, but they should have had it done before that anyway. You can't propose something like this and not have that. And until someone talks to the fire chief and the police chief and asks what needs have to be met to accommodate this, you're putting the people that already live here at risk. and asks what needs have to be met to accommodate this, you're putting the people that already live here at risk.
Quick question. Uh, when they do the intersection signal improvements, what service level do they have to improve it to? Are they currently not?
Right, so ideally they get into a D.O. battle at the intersection. I think they're pretty close to achieving that in a tickle. But that's what they're trying to achieve. They will have, the conditions that are predicted with the new timing are better than they would be prior to the project being constructed. So it's a net benefit in terms of operating issues?
And I, I just want to clarify that we did take into account other projects that are being proposed in the study area and that have been built over time and included those in our NOB build calculations as well.
Hi. Short, sorry. Donna PV 501 Summer Street. Um, my concern, I'm one of the bus people that's concerned because watching the school committee meeting, I know Corona's not going to be here forever, up here. Donna PV 501 Summer Street. You missed me. Um, two of the elementary schools now have eight buses going and they're going to do two trips. That's 32 morning trips of buses, 32 buses on the street net in time trails. Um, I live right there on Summer Street. I can sit on my porch and I can do, I don't know, um, traffic studies, but I do my own little ones and I counted them through this and, and I'm counting millions more than you guys did. I don't, 500 pages in a, um, study was crazy. But I saw 25, I saw 35 and 40 miles per hours on the street in the study, and I didn't see 25 miles. There's a sign right in front of my house that says 25 miles per hour. And there's one right on the other side too. It's like right before the traffic light obviously, but that wasn't in the study. And, um, I, I guess again, my concern is I can't get out of my driveway. My, I took care of it though. My lawn was on fire the other day because people were throwing the cigarettes out of the windows, the trash from people. And can you promise that they're not going to drive cars? You can tell somebody to move into a, a place and not drive and have a kid that's going to do soccer on weekends, not just food shopping, but soccer, or want to go to the movies or want to go up to Dairy Queen? There's another intersection that is awful that just Dairy Queen are out for a coffee that they're going to be driving. I mean, I get in my car and I go and you just go somewhere. I have two girls that play basketball in our driveway and I'm scared to death the ball's going to go out there. It is Corona, it's been quiet. We walk up to the train station, there's six cars there, but there's still a million cars that when the train, train go, starts to go down, everybody speeds up because they've got to beat those tracks going down. They've got to beat the train. It's, it's crazy, crazy on that street. Nobody does the speed limits. You go five, probably of two miles and it goes from 35 to 40 to 30 to 25. There's no speed limit on that street that's right. They pass the buses. My neighbor was pulling in her driveway and they went around on her lawn the other day. I mean, it's just, the traffic that is there now is not safe. And a quick question for the board, the retail space, do they have to tell you what's going to go in there? Yeah, so now they can build that, put that in there, and then a cute little boutique shop goes in there? And everybody from the other side of Abington driving over to go shopping? What's that traffic going to bring? That's not in the traffic study, right?
They, so what we tried to say is the, they did not specifically generate traffic in the traffic set for the retail space. What we tried to say was that the fact that they didn't adjust, or they used the land use code that resulted in higher traffic volumes for the residential piece and that they didn't take any credit for public transportation would essentially include, the, the net traffic increase would include the smaller retail spaces that are generated.
So that could be like the best bakery in the world and everybody comes to it, so.
It's a generic retail space, right. I mean, if they put, if there was a, if there was a, if there was a use that went in there that didn't generate traffic like a typical, you know, 6,000 square foot retail store and generate more than that, it wouldn't be a commercial.
We have three coffee stores on a corner and every one of them generates lines crazy. Not one of them does better than the other one. So if this one gets a coffee shop, it's going to be just as bad.
This is, this assumes that it's a, just a generic retail use that was involved.
And then because people don't drive, the rest of the town, they're still driving to the commuter rail. So we still have all that traffic too. And how do you get the percentage of people leaving from which side of the train station? I feel like whichever train that's coming, they're going that way. Like if the train's coming inbound, they're going out the outbound side so that they can beat the train. Sorry, now I'm going, thanks.
Um, we, we based our, um, split on what was happening out there today.
Hi, don't need to beat you up. Joe Harding, 1A3 Summer Street. Um, I read the report and I got to the intersection of Walnut and Summer. And I saw that accidents were going down. I live four houses down and my kitchen window overlooks a stop sign. And I have seen so many accidents. Not recently because everyone's in their homes, but prior to this, in February, there were accidents, couldn't get out of my driveway, just traffic keeps on building and building. Seems like we really don't have the infrastructure, even with the, the timing of the lights. Because if you notice on 58, if you're turning, there's no turn lane. So people are backed up, behind, and they're not going until the lights turn red. So people are backing up all the time. Okay, timing might help if there is your green lights, red lights, whatever with the timing. But what about Walnut and Summer? What are you going to do there? And you're right, 18 is just there, cars are going to get backed up. I just can't see how you're going to put a Band-Aid on this. I just can't see how it's going to work, no matter what you do, because it is so congested, that area. I have a picture of Summer Street when it was a dirt road, farmland out the back. It's a picture, so it's not that old. It's old, but it's not that old. I moved into Summer Street 20 years ago and I loved it. It was quiet, fairly quiet, until we got there. And now it's just, I feel like the property value's going down, constantly going down because of all the traffic. I mean, what's going to happen to the value of our property if it keeps going like this? You don't know if, if it's going to be, these units are going to be rented out the whole entire time. There could be some sitting there. With the whole COVID thing, no one knows what the new normal is. I understand that housing's very important and it was in Abington planned that it should be incorporated, but they're looking at incorporating into the centers, the two centers, rather than where this is going in. So I, I, I really don't understand why it cannot be moved to a better location that can accommodate. That's all I wanted to say.
I just want to make comment that this project is in a transit-oriented development district, which is a zoning which allows intensive development near a train station. This was passed, this is only by law by town meeting. That's, this is integration, it's our, it's, it's integration. Are there any other traffic questions anyone might ask?
Hi, Karen Bowen, 937 Plymouth Street. I have a couple of questions and you're saying that you're going to change the lights so that there's, they're going to be quicker, I understand. What is that going to do for the traffic that's coming down, that's backed up, past Hershey, all the way to the Summer Street lights now? The traffic that is going to be backed up or is backed up from Veterans Place all the way down to the Dairy Queen as it is now? And what's it going to do for the people who are trying to get up to Route 18 when the traffic is backed up to Walnut Street? And they have to take a right or a left to Walnut to eliminate the backup that's onto 18? Never mind Progress Street, which is going to be a horrible cut through. Nobody's mentioned anything about those people. There are no sidewalks, it's definitely a safety issue, and this has to be addressed. And if the builders get away with putting this in, they should probably also do something for the, the, um, the citizens of Abington and put in some sidewalks all along Progress. I've met three new families that have moved into Progress Street. They all have little kids. Their realtor never told them that they were going to have a development in their backyard. They are like appalled about it. They can't take their kids for bike rides down the street, they can't walk. I can't walk my dog down that street anymore without having to watch behind me with the cars coming up. And I'm supposed to be too much to ask for them to put a sidewalk down Summer Street all the way, which it never has had, but I mean, I used to walk my grandson back and forth to school there and that was tricky. And you know, the volume that's going to be there is, I mean, you, you guys, this is like beating a dead horse. You know what's going to happen. And I do believe in the traffic study, in 2.2, it states in there that it is a faulted traffic study and that it should be redone and looked at a second time. I think it's about a paragraph down from 2.2. So please, take into consideration Progress Street, those poor people. I mean, they've just bought their houses and it's, it's going to be hell for them. And again, you know, you've got the intersections, um, Summer Street, and yeah, I know you can't talk about the other developments that are going in, but Summer, I mean Plymouth Street's going to be a mess shortly. So that's, those are my concerns. And I hope you take them into consideration and do something with the builder on that part. Okay, thank you.
I, I believe they are looking at sidewalks on Progress Street, that that's something that's, yeah.
All right, are there any more, any other traffic questions? Um, and we appreciate, did you ask?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go stick around?
Oh, sure. Thank you. Hello, Andy.
Hello.
Look at the traffic portion of the public hearing, uh, public's participation. I ask you to reintroduce yourself and then ask folks if they have questions.
Okay. So Brian Marchetti, McCarty Engineering, um, the civil engineer in the project.
So does anyone have questions about the site?
Uh, I think in a previous iteration, there was a fence proposed along the Progress Street boundary, the property. Is that still included or has that been changed since you're going to be leaving? I think a lot of that untouched.
So we have, along the full extent of the Progress Street side, there's a six-foot privacy fence with a significant landscape buffer with mature trees at the top of slope, uh, behind. So there's, there's a, a wide, very wide swath now of, um, proposed landscaping and a six-foot privacy fence. Yes, yeah. This, the, the easement I believe that he's speaking of is not this easement that runs along the property line. It's the swath that runs along. But this one was abandoned, it was one of them right here.
It's still on the planet.
It, well, we'd have to have the attorney come speak to that.
Yeah, and it's still on the planet, it's a 50-foot wide easement. So, so my point is, if the easement is, is used and trees cut down.
A portion of that buffer. We have 60 feet at this end and 80 feet at this end. So you'd have 50 feet, so we'd be left with the privacy fence, which is the six-foot fence, which would block all headlights with a row of mature vegetation along the backside of that fence. So a portion of it would be reduced and then down to this end, you'd still be left with 30 feet along the northern end.
So it goes from zero to very improved on the street. The line of that easement.
So what I'm saying is here on the northern edge, we have 80 feet from the back of our, um,
From the back?
No, from the back of the parking lot, so the paving. So the back of the, where the fence is, we've got 80 feet along the northern edge. And down here.
That includes the 50.
That includes the 50. So we, we'd have, take away the 50 feet, we'd have 30 feet on the northern end.
So again, my point is if someone was to use that easement to protect the trees, 50 feet of that would be gone, you'd have roughly 30 feet from the building?
Not from the building, from the parking, the fence, yes.
It, it could have, it could have. The area between building D and the supplemental parking, kind of all that white space?
This in here, yeah.
What's going to be there?
That, it's a wetland, so it's, it's an area that's being untouched.
All right, so it's not going to be?
It'll never be developed.
Clear or anything?
No.
Hey, and if you look between the supplemental parking and the, your property line?
Down here?
That's going to not be there either?
No. Yes, yep.
I wanted to, can you touch guys on, this is called a comment. Does anyone have any questions on the, the site?
I have a question, were you on the feasibility of your site plan here?
We need you to come on and speak to the most, and then find yourself a question.
Melvin Schneider of 66 Progress Street. Looking in the site plan here, it's all right, tight cores for all emergency vehicles. You have one designated area for snow removal dumping. All the other areas are wetland, which is illegal for any piling or dumping of snow with the vicinity of any wetland or conservation land. So what is your accommodations on snow removal that is not going to impact the firefighters' access with their vehicles? Because you've got one tiny little spot right here designated for snow. You can't pile anywhere here or anywhere here by mass law conservation. So what are you doing all down here, all of this area, that is going to impact emergency vehicle access?
So we have snow designation on the property on the, on the north side, through this side. side. The applicant, we've, we did address this in one of the previous, part of the operation and maintenance of the facility is when there is no area left for snow removal, it will be trucked off-site. It'll have to be stored in parking spaces until it's removed.
Just to clarify that, so it looks like the, on the plan, it looks like a bunch of pages, but that really the snow removal area?
Yes, that's a, it's typical. It's proposed, no storage areas, all accessible walkways shall remain unobstructed, and excess snow beyond designated storage area shall be hauled off-site. And the applicant has agreed to that in previous meeting, and that could certainly be a condition of approval.
It's very tight quarters with what the accommodation that is with this whole area down here, where you shifted the building slightly to meet the fire chief's standards?
Yes.
I see, I just see the easement being taken out for snow removal, and most of that being on conservation land, which would then become violation. I see a lot of issues with that side of it in the tight quarters of this, especially with how inclement our New England weathers are.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a maintenance, it's a maintenance issue. There is, there is an operation and maintenance plan as part of the...
So, where are all the cars going to go? You're saying you're going to use parking spaces for snow removal at times?
Case-by-case basis, temporary condition, yeah.
So, are all the cars going to be parking on the streets?
If you look at the plan, there is, total spaces required by zoning is 176 spaces, and we're providing a total of 247 spaces in this development.
Just seems like...
We have surplus parking.
Just seems very tight with what the standards are being set down by the fire chief.
And we've, we've proven with our truck turn plan that our, that our access is adequate and accessible by the fire department.
Chief, chief, could you come up, please, and introduce the question?
Thank you, John Nono, your fire chief. We did discuss this, and I agree, this was one of our concerns as well, when, when we had the Zoom meeting and I think in-person meeting on that. The, the tolerance for our apparatus is extremely close. As you recall, we did discuss this, and, you know, they showed us where they would be piling it, and he did mention it would have to be contingent on approval that they'd be trucking it off as well. So, we, we also had that concern, and we'd have to make sure that that certainly was taken care of.
And I, I think just, we are in New England. We get snow. And it's, you know, if we're going to get a several-foot snowstorm, we're going to run into this no matter where you are. In any, any plaza, any parking area, any parking lot in residential developments, especially in condominium complexes or apartment complexes like this. It's, it's something that's encountered, it's something that, you know, I'm sure will happen, and the applicant and the developer is fully committed to, you know, for the safety and operations of the people who live there. You know, it's up to them to remove the snow. So, it's, it's understood.
David Smith, 941 Main Street, Hingham, Mass. I'm a trustee for Center Avenue Realty Trust. I hope my glasses don't fog up. The site plan of January 21st, 2020, by Brian Marchetti, shows the easement that we spoke about a little bit, and that's what's on file at the Registry of Deeds. The Abington Crossing Plan show the following in the easement. Parking both next to Building E and near Summer Street, the proposed pervious paver and grass paved fire lane next to Building E, a dumpster pad, and a proposed tree line buffer for the residential property. To present to the property owners on Progress Street that a, that a buffer will be present when the trees could be removed is, I feel not right. Thank you.
Can you bring up, just move the recording to the, to the president, I'm going to ask. I'll, I mean, has anybody seen the new plans? Have you guys even aware of there are plans, subplans going on? You're referring to Building E, there's no Building E.
Okay, I, yeah, but I haven't, I haven't seen new plans.
So, pull the record if you have, whether the...
Right, thank you for addressing that, Mr. Chairman.
Let's start right into the record, at the start of the meeting.
Question for you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The supplemental parking lot would be built over the easement that's on paper. As a planning board, do we have to take that into consideration, or is that a dispute between two private apartments? If anyone built a parking lot, or if someone has an easement, is that something where we say, no, you can't do that, or is that just...
I just said easement is on the old fire station.
Hold on a second, ask the chairman, please.
I think that this needs to be resolved, and I'm going to wait for the components to answer this. Those are some of the questions we have. Yes, town council, lady. Could you identify yourself?
Uh, sure. And, and I noticed, I am 25. Dan Bailey, I'm counsel for the project. I would like to respond to the easement issue. Originally, this easement existed in that Center Avenue Realty Trust right here with Summer Street. When the Monahan Crossing subdivision was approved, the approval said that the easement needed to be relocated, which is why we see some easement here, and then this way. So, he, mister, he is correct that there is still an easement of record here, but on the ground, what practically has happened is it's been relocated so that he can come from here. We would be facilitating the use of that easement by constructing pavement here that will get him out to Summer Street.
So, so the sound out gave up their rights to that, to the law?
They have not formally given them up of record. They should have. That's what the planning board approval requires. And if we had to, we could go to land court and get it wiped out. But as a practical matter, you know, let's, be, be very realistic about this. Nobody in their right mind, first of all, is going to build from here to here when they have the right to go like that.
That's your opinion?
That is my opinion, you know. There's also a lot of wetlands here that they'd have to go over.
Can you... I guess there's probably a reason why this connection comes into this country, but it's not the only...
I mean, I, you're right, it's a question for town council, and having worked with your town council many times, I suspect that what she will say to you is what the cases say, which is, planning boards don't have the expertise to evaluate rights under easements. That's an issue for the courts.
My understanding is that you can't put any permanent structure under easement, but utilities could go something like that through there. If you build that parking lot there, someone would have the right to shop by that, you have a car that way off there to, to the easement, and they might open the easement.
Well, we...
So, it's only really at this point, it's just that, back to the legal, the crossing the teeth.
Yeah.
We have, we have, so you probably would have to take that and, and, and...
But for our purposes of the board, it's considered a flaw that we have to take into consideration when we're dealing with this.
It's, it's, well, I agree that some is, it's the town where just to be a jerk about it, they said they're going to take the E, which was possible to take, right? It's, it's this whole thing, it's building that piece of parking lot, it should, should have been, but technically, it, it would be changing the rules. So, I guess, you know, this is all the question, is yes, we have to take it because... Same, same reason that fifty foot, that easement is...
So, why don't we...
It's listed. And, you know, and the reason of the person, then, that parking lot would be removed.
Well, I mean, one approach would be to agree to remove that parking, take it out of the easement, because then we would still comply with the requirements for, of the zoning by law for the number of parking spaces.
I'm, I can, you know, this, you know, we don't have town council to answer my colleague's call's question. We have to, it's clearly an issue, because even, we don't have town council, and I'm not a local man or a local lawyer. If you were to take that easement out of the plan, it would still, and it would still comply with the parking requirements. It resolves the easement issue. Is this something that you agree to?
Yes. We even agree to a condition to that effect.
I mean, you could put a couple parallel spaces in there right now.
Yeah, we'd sneak a couple more in, but, you know, we'd, we'd certainly agree to a condition that we revise the plan to remove those parking spaces from the easement.
One other question is the parking. So, right now, we have 247 spaces, they were taken, maybe a few removed because of this. We have proposed 156 units. So, that means 1.2, 1.3 cars per unit, essentially their space for it. What's the family standard for it? A trains and oriented development, how many cars do you normally have? I know, the theory is that it allows families' households to reduce car usage, while a lot of families still have that separate car, little weekends, go now.
Okay. I put on my planning 101 right here, tried to explain to you a transit oriented, the principle behind transit oriented development, and the reason why the town approved it years ago, was to allow more intense development, because it was near a train station, and the theory was that people would have less cars because they would use public transit. Some of those people still have cars, but that's the theory. It's why you can't prove the idea of transit oriented development, because if, if development would happen, it would also reduce the number of cars. That is the grand theory of what transit oriented development is.
Correct. Still doesn't mean that people can, everyone who's in here can still have two cars. So, I guess my question is, is there a way to monitor this so that whoever manages this property essentially knows how many, through stickers, box, whatever, so that all of a sudden, you go run into a situation where there's 270 cars for 250 spaces?
There absolutely is. I mean, you speak about transit oriented development, and it, it really can vary, you know. There have been projects in the city of Boston that they've tried to get permitted with, with almost no parking.
But you're right, next to a train station.
But they're right next to a train station.
You're right down the red line.
Yeah, and, and there's no question that there's a difference between being on a subway and being on a commuter rail. I wouldn't stand here and say, yeah, I couldn't say credibly that you're going to get the same ratio here that you'd get, I do a lot of work in Quincy. We work with a 0.5, 0.6 ratio per unit in Quincy, and it works. But the boards in Quincy asked exactly the same question. Well, what if in your 150 units, you get more than 75 parking spaces? What are you going to do about it? And what we end up doing is, you know, some sort of permit program where, you know, we, it's first come, first served. We've got 75 spaces, and if all the spaces are used, then you can't lease that unit to someone who has a car. They've got no place to put it.
You're right, my friend, I just...
Yes, exactly.
You're used to work.
Yeah.
But, yeah, well, you know, talk, talk transit oriented, but spell out the evidence. It's, it's different, when you say, you're on a mass transit line, you're on a commuter rail line, and they also have a finite number of parking spaces, commuter rail line versus what's...
Yeah, I mean, Brian, Brian just ran the numbers. Right now, we have a 1.58 space per unit ratio, and if we were to lose those spaces, it would still be 1.51. So, it'd still be over 1.5, which traditionally is sort of the, you know, not that there's any magic number, but it's a typical magic number for the number of parking spaces in multifamily, one and two-bedroom units.
So, I just want to say that just again, one of the numbers again, the number of units, the number of parking spaces that you have, the number of parking spaces that you're going to lose, and the total number of parking spaces you'll have, if you're going to do this, please.
So, right now, as shown, it's 247 parking spaces. So, 247 divided by 156 units is the 1.58. If we lose 11 spaces here, which is what the county is to get us out of the easement with some buffer, we're at 1.51. We'll be able to gain a couple of parallel spaces, so it'll be a little bit higher, but the minimum we'd have, losing these 11 spaces, will be 1.51.
It doesn't mess up the snow, it doesn't mess up access to the parking lot?
No.
So, what I want to ask for, what else is asked of the board is that, one of our provisions is that there's a traffic management plan for parking situations, so that guest parking, resident parking is all contained on-site, that everyone, for example, people are parking in Progress Street somewhere else.
Yeah.
That there's a mechanism where we can say we need to address this issue.
Yeah.
Also some sort of identification status, right?
Yeah.
As well as the fact, frankly, to discover if people were parking here instead of the MBTA station or place, I'm like...
Yeah, you know, before I, you know, lived in a single-family residence, I've lived in a couple apartment complexes. Everywhere I've ever, from college till whatever, you've always had a handicap, some sort of license system where your car is accounted for and you're given...
But you, you have to deal with the entity of parking, you have to park in your place plus parking on the north side.
Yeah, and, and trust, we will, we will deal with the MBTA, because if we start letting people park, you know, our, our customers' parking will quickly be eviscerated. I just want to mention one other thing, you know, given the, sort of the layout here tonight. I don't know if you said anything about Wood Partners?
No.
Okay, you know, Abington Crossing, you know, is owned by John Iredale, and John's been coming to the hearings. And recently, John entered into an agreement with Wood Partners, which is a, a national developer of multifamily. They do really nice projects. You know, you can go on the website and see any number of their facilities in Massachusetts. I'm, I'm sorry, any number of their facilities in Massachusetts. Mark Sek from Wood is here, but he's standing outside, and, you know, we'd asked him to come just to say hi and, you know, introduce his company. I can speak a little bit to them, because I've, I, I don't work with them, but I've been in transactions with them, and they ultimately would be the entity that would build this and, and probably, at least initially, manage it. And they're very accustomed to doing the, just these sorts of traffic management programs.
I want to get that. Are there any other public comments as far as facilities?
Can I just clarify something? Sorry, do I have some, I have a big mouth, can I just yell?
No, we actually do love that.
Go ahead.
I want to see if you want to make sure you're...
I do, okay, it's out of my mouth. Bye. Donna PV 501 Summer Street. I just want to clear up too, I was just going through my notes, because you had asked about Building E disappearing, and so, I have that, you said no retail, they had a coffee shop, a daycare, and a cleaner, and then we got rid of that? And so now there's retail space back again? Just to come back to my, get me caught up again, because I lost myself.
Retail space is still there, but they had eliminated during the daycare, they, they had a list of businesses that they would collaborate, which, you know, tried to come to the site, not create, or whatever else, on their bills, on the fact. But, no, the details was in there, and so...
And what about the parking for that? Is that in not, all that parking spot you're talking about now?
Brian, could you come and...
Yeah, so this, this Building A is where there's three 2,000 square foot suites. So, these three, this building here, just the first floor, we have whatever type of retail.
And there's parking for that too, though, or are we...
Well, it's part, part of the surplus.
It is.
It's, so here, we got, yes, it is part of the count. So, proposed commercial, 6,000 square feet. The zoning requires one space per 300 square feet, so that's all accounted for, commercial. There's 20 spaces required, that's part of the total count.
And then I have 150, it went up to 156?
Well, so, the total unit count went up to 156, but we got rid of a lot of two-family, or two, two-bedroom. So, there's actually less people. It's 156 units, but we got rid of a lot of two-bedroom.
That doesn't make the building higher, or...
No.
And you don't have to know what retail's going in there? When they build it, they can decide down the road whatever they want, or do they have to come in front of you guys again before they put it in there?
So, at that point, it's been the least best, when it comes to that, I think you have to, you have to...
And the license... And the licensing that goes through boards like, it's not a six.
It's the next board. Okay. Just curious, I mean, didn't know if they could just put whatever they wanted in there and?
I'm going to be tired.
Brandon Cronin, four fifty-eight Summer Street. I thought you had made a condition that they had to have retail and that they couldn't.
It wasn't a decision, but we can't.
But you can't.
We can't tell them that, you can't build this unless you have.
But I thought that was the definition of transit-oriented district, that it have housing and retail on the same site.
We are, we have a part that they have the space for retail. It's not a requirement, you can't make it a condition of approval if they have a retail place in place before they build it. But it is a condition of approval that they leave the space. And again, I've been one of the smallest voices on this floor and encourage.
Okay. So, now, you, you said that there are. What? Right. So, now, you've just taken twenty spaces out for retail. So, does that mess up your five point eight, five point one percentage that you were talking about if you took out the eleven? So, now, you've taken out thirty-one.
That's part of the total count. Included in the total count.
That's why I suggested some sort of permitting blocking, something planned so that they don't run into that situation where there aren't the spaces for the retail space, or isn't the space for guest parking or whatever.
Okay. And what's the acreage for this site? Because I couldn't find it.
I believe the total acreage of all properties, I believe, is six to.
Well, he's looking at, my last question is, there was something to do with the fire chief about the access to the buildings and everything, which increased the amount of paved area. Is that correct?
How did you open that?
Right. So, that there's more paved area under the new plan in order.
There's less.
There's less.
There's less paved area, there's less people.
Less units?
There's more.
Well, no, I mean, a hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and fifty-six is not a big difference. Because I was just concerned. What? Right, I understand that part of it. So, I just didn't know if that was going to have an effect on the drainage, the fact that you're increasing more impervious areas. Because that's a huge issue for anyone who lives on Summer Street, anyone up or down on either side in terms of all the water mitigation changes, the wetlands, the wetland mitigation, so.
So, we've reduced the amount of impervious from the previous previous proposal we submitted. It's been designed in accordance with the local slow-motor bylaws and the Mass D E P bylaws for slow-motor. It's been reviewed by the technical consultants, and they've agreed that it meets all the standards and requirements of law.
Okay. And.
It's eight point nine nine eight.
Eight point nine nine, okay. Thank you very.
That includes both sides and the roof. So, the whole parcel, you see a line in black, the black line.
Okay, thank you.
Dear, with a question earlier about lighting, the intersection of Mononglass and Summer Street, I couldn't describe it on the time. If I could explain to how the lights have been done. Well, if there's any force there, I'm.
So, there's. There's no additional lighting proposed, having the intersection. Right now, everything in Way has light poles. There are light poles that are located all the way up and down Monahan Way. In the parking areas here, we've added three light poles. So, in close proximity to the entrance, there'll be light here, but it's all shielded to keep it within the property. So, there's no light spillage over into something.
I guess the problem would lead to whether or not the neighbors, the streets are dark now outside of Mononglass. Whether or not a light could be added out there to, maybe, like a green pole or whatever might be out there.
It's certainly good, we're not opposed to that. If, you know, you know, traffic consultant, neither one of them, yours or ours, requested it or required it, if it's something that this board would like us to explore or put as a condition that is discussed with the public works, we can certainly do that.
Are there any other public questions? Somebody?
This is actually in reference to something your attorney just mentioned, that you have a new partner, some national builder that is going to come and help and then at least initially maintain it or manage it. That begs the question, is the developer, your client, planning on building this and then selling it? And if so, we have to make sure that the conditions of the snow removal and all of that still take place.
The expectation is that, once the permits are in hand, the project would be sold. But a special permit runs with the land, so any subsequent purchaser would be buying, subject to any conditions that you imposed.
Anyone else? Any other public comments?
Just something I just picked up here. With having three separate retail spaces on the front here, with the tight tolerances and the access roads here coming in, what is going to be for delivery sets? You have no loading dock areas, you're going to have trucks coming in and out, blocking the main road access at that point? They're going to be parked in the fire lane to load and unload? Or was the provisions on that?
So, we've, we have an area, it was discussed, but it was never requested from the board or from the consultants that. We have a significant area here, which is by the main entrance. These are all small two thousand square foot. These aren't buildings or commercial spaces that are allowed to or would have a large loading bay or loading dock area. So, most of the deliveries for inventory, whatever it would be, would be on small carts. We have an area here that would, that would fit an actual tractor trailer if required, but along Monahan Way, where we'd be able to fit it off the shoulder of the roadway between existing light poles. Just a temporary parking loading zone that could be stripped. But otherwise, it would just be off, off, you know, if, if, if we don't do a loading area like that, it would be off hour deliveries or just somebody wheeling carts.
Because even the small Dunkin' Donuts station has a fifty-three foot semi there, everyone wearing a four thirty AM.
No one's probably going to park there.
What's that?
No one's probably told them to park there, Dunkin' Donuts.
Right, so that's something that would be, they park right in front there, and then they set that long ramp, takes out another twenty feet of them with the tight quarters and that. That's something that needs to be accommodated on.
And then, I mean, that would certainly have to be detailed, it's worked out with whatever commercial user moves in.
They didn't specify the retail user, delivery off hours and.
And we've laid it out, we know we have the area here to accommodate.
So, you're talking off-hour deliveries worked out, now we're outside hour restrictions? I don't want to be hearing lift gates on trucks banging at kind of block at night in my backyard delivering. So, how is off-hours going to be acceptable in a residential area?
So, I think a simple condition for a loading area along Monahan Way, at the, there's several locations here where it would fit. It's wide open, there's no utilities in the way. All it is is a, you know, four-foot wide indentation where we'd move the curb line. That's hatched. Right in this location, right in this location where there are ramps that go into each one of the three commercials. Commercial suites.
So, now you're saying to block a handicap ramp or a.
No, there's no handicap ramp to block. Every access to this building is accessible.
That's the location up front for if we could dip it, dip in the curb and get back out again. It would certainly be better than pulling into the parking lot and blocking the cars.
Yep.
And also would be a place that if you had kind of business where somebody, really, really, that's what you could think, you get out of the car and you're going to do it in half thirty seconds, running to the place and like that, and it might be, it may have to be something like that too. Like the front big drop off. Supposed to stop in line when you're, when you're parking lot.
I would say if it's a loading area, designated loading area, it should be designated for loading only. Otherwise, you're going to have people pulling into parking when trucks will be trying to deliver. So, it would be restricted to deliveries only.
Okay, I'm just looking at, is anyone else in the public? Anything else to add?
Karen Bowen, nine thirty-seven Plymouth Street. I just want clarification. Are you people just building this and then you're going to sell it to somebody else who's going to own it? Are you just the project managers or something, the general contractors?
So, we are the design team, designing and permitting the project. Wood Partners owns and operates facilities just like this all over the country. So, the intent is for John Iredale Carson Company and Wood Partners to build it. And, you know, what happens after that? Typically, Wood Partners would maintain it and operate it, but, you know.
But you don't know. So, somebody could come in here and then not take the people of Abington into consideration after that?
No, I mean, they're going to come in here, they have a approval or conditions of approval that are recorded that run with the project. So, they're held by the fire. When they buy a property like this, that all comes with it. I can't control.
Okay. And just one other thing, I was looking at my notes, and originally, it was one sixty. Then it went down to one fifty units. Now, it's back up to one fifty-four units. And also in the notes, it says that there were going to be two hundred and thirty-one parking spaces, but a hundred and seventy-nine, if not expanded.
If we don't build out this parking area.
Okay.
This park, the total plan here is two hundred and forty-seven spaces.
All right, up from two thirty-one.
Two hundred and forty-seven spaces. It's a hundred and fifty-six units. But several of the two-bedroom units have been reduced to one-bedroom units. So, there's less people than we previously proposed in all of our submissions.
Okay.
So, we're reducing the traffic impacts, we're reducing the amount of trips in the area. So, it's less of an impact than what we previously have.
I still don't understand the one point five car thing, but that's for you guys to figure out.
I don't feel traffic engineer before the emergency meeting.
Well, I own an apartment, and I have one parking space, and I can't rent to couples because they can't have, I can't facilitate two cars. Sorry. But thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right. I'm going to ask our board members to make a motion to close the hearing. Someone make the motion?
Someone.
Secondly?
We have a conversation prior.
Okay, the motions were made, conversation.
I was expecting some comments over here.
Well, again, shall we, or do we have a question? Maybe to close the public hearing or? I'm drawn up there. Well, we could make, someone could make the motion, because the town council isn't here tonight. Someone could make the motion to continue this hearing until our September meeting, when town council would be here. Would that be acceptable, Mr. Speaker? The motion, considering we can make a motion now to continue the public hearing until September meeting, when town council would be here.
I guess.
It's unfortunate for everybody here that town council.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Town council is freely, you know, this is a public hearing. You know, when you close the public hearing, our presentation is done, the public's ability to comment is done. But town council is your attorney, and she has the opportunity to give you input. So, if you were to close the hearing tonight, you still have the opportunity to confer with council at your next meeting.
You can attend, it's, would you be able to speak without the, or we can reopen a public hearing?
Well, if we close the hearing, that's all.
It's closed, yeah. You can't reopen it without re-noticing it.
So, the other, so the other recommendation we have is to, this town council wasn't here tonight, not to close the whole hearing, but to continue this hearing until September, when town council will be here. Do you have a question?
I will withdraw my motion.
So, someone would make a motion to continue? By closing the hearing, it will continue until September, so town council, town council will be here. Does someone second that?
It's seconded, but then they, that many comments, we need to discuss it with the organics, which we've got in front of, of what, some of it, what we have, we don't have.
Well, if we don't, if we don't close the hearing tonight and continue it, you don't have to, you don't have to make this stipulation to do this. So, the motion's been made, and seconded, yes. All those in favor of closing to.
One, one, one moment, I apologize. Are we setting a date for?
You have to.
I would be. Yeah, I'm afraid, do we need to have a separate one just for this project? Do you know? You've been hearing a couple things that. Yeah, I'm just afraid that we're going to have a very similar capacity on that day too.
Well, considering we could do this, the public's view. So, we have our plans, we're getting on fourteen, and this being continued to the fifteen.
It works for us.
All right, so.
The other part of that is, we didn't have any outside. One hearing could be outside. When the Congress stopped.
Well, that's what I was thinking too. If we had it up on the board, for example, if we have people, you can schedule this for last time you turn here, just do the other business, the form is usual stuff up front. And just ask the people who attend this meeting.
To wait, yeah. Fine with us.
Let's do this on the floor.
Do you have any problems, David?
We are not comfortable with that, but I love the experience.
Which is because the only problem is that you recognize the last place and that was still over from one hearing to another. And town council, it's always the best, because you cannot prevent anybody from entering the room.
Okay.
So, and can a town hall, that would always be the color of the room?
All right, so we go to, we go to the fourteen. Because I don't want the evaluation and any of the regulations. Does it give you any way to change? We can all, we need to listen to the, we need to do what this is.
That's fine.
All right, so, the motion's been made, and seconded, to. All right, so, Thursday, day, and second, to, uh, continue this until Tuesday, September fifteenth, at six p.m.
And will it be here?
Yes. And again, the town, the government, this is my, it would be twenty-five, and that doesn't stand for.
Hopefully by then, it's a, it's a. Second, all those in favor? All right. Thank you all.
Can, before, before you close, I missed a discussion, I know, about traffic a little bit earlier, and I just want to note, was there a request for us to do some additional traffic work?
I'm really sorry, Steve.
Okay. So we'll get that in before the next hearing.
Thank you, everyone.